Ms. Clark, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
So we have a forum, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy Saint Patrick's Day, everyone. All right, do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
We do this evening. Keith and Kate.
I've waited for my name.
Hello, Mr. President. Village Board, on behalf of my son Hunter Pincotti, I'd like to thank all of you for the nice letter article you guys put in the newsletter this was the past month, I guess. I'd like to thank you guys for.
Thank you.
Thank you for your stuff, we appreciate your community.
We hope it's their last.
Thank you.
Hunter wanted to be here.
Yeah, he's just feeling under the weather with the climate change and everything, you know, he has migraine, so he's.
Don't worry, but he's back tomorrow.
That's what he told him, so we'd like to thank you guys and.
Very nice.
Yeah, we're just waiting to hear back from counsel what his board review is and then we'll have the official announcement that he made Eagle.
That's great, thanks a lot.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Anyone else, Ms. Lyons? Okay, before you guys, you have the minutes from March 3, 2022. You can review them for any additions, deletions, corrections, or grammatical issues.
I have two.
Two.
Two, yeah, well, one's just a personal thing, for page eight, five, at the very bottom, about Springfield, so can we change very necessary, because I don't think that's ever been necessary, to make it significant, so, which tells her that this requirement is not very significant to buyers.
This is on page five or page eight?
Yeah, five.
I'm sorry, I thought you said.
The very bottom, I mean, the last word is necessary on page five, and I just want to see if we can just change it to significant to buyers, because that's what I was kind of trying to say.
Things are significant or necessary to significant?
To buyers. Simple as this.
What's your second correction?
Second one was on page 10. And under accounts table. The paragraph, I guess trustee Paul Strini asked to make sure, it was, I think, on the second line, it says our identical amounts to two firms that have similar names, it wasn't legal fees for firms, I think it was the actual homeowners. So, is that correct? Yeah, so if we could change that legal fees to easements. And then. Change firms to entities, that'll cover both people somewhere on our trusts.
Anything else? No, a lot of minutes here. Deputy Clerk Ray did a great job. Did a better job than I did running meetings, for sure. I was distracted by the sound of the type. Does that sound like a good excuse? It's definitely not true, but it does sound like a good excuse. Okay, if there's no other changes to the minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve them with the changes noted by Ms. Clerk.
So, second.
Okay, questions or comments? Vote, call, vote, please, Ms. Clerk.
Ms. Fordham.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Upstate.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion pass five, ayes, one upstate.
Good evening, Mr. Hedges, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for your consideration of a motion to award the water system connection project to the low bidder Kane County Excavating in the sum of $966,642.56. I'm going to speak just briefly to both items A and B on the agenda tonight, they are coupled, although they're two separate votes. Item A is the cost of the construction contract, item B is the engineering for the same project, so I just want you to be aware of that. And I'm going to talk about the numbers just briefly in total, the total project is right around 1.2 million, a little, 1.275, and of that, I wanted to let you know where the funding is coming from, this has been, as you know, a very important project for the village for several years, we have $875,000 coming from two separate member initiative grants on Springfield, from Senator Ugaske, I think primarily, and then their balance of just under $400,000 will be coming from Parker Funds. So that is fully funded at this point, and I can tell you that you have the summary of the bids in your packet, if they're electronic, you can make them bigger and see them, if they're not, probably can't see them very well, but this firm, Kane County Excavating is a local firm, and they have been vetted by EEI, and we recommend approval of this contract. This was managed by Julie Morrison, who most of you know worked with the village for many years, the tentacle.
This has been a project that former Mayor Magason has really championed for a very, very long time, and there were a lot of meetings in the past few years, trustee Kajaki was involved with some of those as well, and so it's nice to see that we're getting this close, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, can you give me the number for Lima, I can't read any of these.
So Lima, the total?
Yes.
I know, I'm amazed that I can read that. Now, it's like.
You're correct.
Thirty-two thousand dollars higher.
That's just a point of clarification, so that I understand, because I know that this bid came in about $400,000 less than what we anticipated, and then we do have the other line of business for $136,000, that's for the engineering fee contract, and it's all still part of the same project, does that mean we are short $136,000 from what we thought we were going to have?
No, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, so when the bid, the bid came in at a certain amount and.
Construction portion of the bid.
Right, and there was $400,000 less, and so we had a little extra leeway.
$400,000 less than the construction estimate, it did not include engineering.
Okay, so engineering was always separate, that was.
If you just look at the top of your bid sheet, the very first column is normally, at least, let me make sure it is. No, they don't have an engineer's estimate on this.
Oh, no, it's far right.
Okay, thank you, so that was the engineer's estimate for just the construction portion, and that's where we came in under budget.
Okay, so then we always had the extra amount for engineering was always going to be separate, and that was a part of the grant.
Correct.
That we were using, okay.
The preliminary engineering has been done already to get to the bid package, this is the construction engineering, the second motion would be for that today.
Thank you.
I just have a question, in going through some of the bid analysis, we talked about this in regards to other projects, and how an overestimation of budget can affect the board's decision whether to go forward with a project or not, that if we were to look at something and say it costs a million and we don't have that budget, but then the actual project comes in at $600,000 and we would have had that budget, we could miss out on some of this, right, and there are some line items in here where the engineering estimate was $10,000 per unit price, and the bid came in at $500 per unit price, and so, usually I can understand some variance, but when we have line item variances that large, is there any, how are, how is the, what's the perspective on a contractor being able to come in at $9,500 under what the engineer's estimated per unit of different items?
Example? I can't read any of them.
Yes, it's, the example I'm talking about is the second line, it's the, "Connected existing water main, four units, Kane County Excavating, $500 per unit, total cost $2,000, engineering estimate $10,000 per unit, total cost $40,000." So that's an overestimation of $38,000 on one line item, so I'm just trying to, I don't know a lot about construction, so I'm trying to understand how we can be that.
Well, I'm trying to figure that out, because again, I realize that people can't see this, right, but if you zoom in, you can see that, like, the other estimates are pretty, I mean, you've got, the next one is 1,700.
They're all running the same programs.
Like, they seem different, but they don't, they don't seem as far.
Like Boulder, for example, is 32,000 versus the engineer's estimate of 40, I think what you're going to find, and Tim can speak to this a little bit, Julie's not with us tonight, but I think what I found in the past is that they're concerned about getting to the bottom line, these contractors are, oftentimes, the line items are not critical, so you might be very aggressive on one particular line item, maybe it's got really good costs, in this particular case, by the way, we don't have to worry about shortages or material supply, because they ordered the material from your vendor before they even awarded the contract, so they have the material in stock, we don't know what some of the other bidders might have, so, that's my answer, if you'd like, Tim, would you like to take a shot at that, why some line items are so far off?
It's, I would, you know, agree with you, what you just said, Jay, there's just, you'll see it's variable across contractors on that, you know, on line item two there, we were above, you know, everybody, but that's not the case, and, you know, it's just sometimes, like you said, the contractors focus on the bottom line, because that's what gets them awarded the contract, so, you know, sometimes they're, it's coming high or low, sometimes it has something to do with what they anticipate the work will be, how much work will be involved, sometimes it has to do with, you know, what they know their costs are, sometimes it has to do with certain line items, they'll anticipate, you know, their profit and overhead in some line items, so it's just kind of variable for the reasons why any one particular line item might be a variable from contractor to contractor in our estimate.
I'm just seeking understanding, I'm not questioning it, I'm just trying to.
Oh, really, you should question, Tim, are you concerned with the 37% under all the rest of them?
Yeah, that's right.
Especially like Montemay or.
Not under all the rest, 37% under the estimate, only 33,000 under the next bidder.
Okay.
No, I mean, there were, there were a couple there, you know, down, the bottom two were very close, and then, you know, generally, our estimates, you know, we, we kind of hope that we're in the middle of them, because, you know, we don't want to be too conservative, and we don't want to be too, cutting it too close, and then have, you know, everybody be over our estimate, and then, you know, the project is not within budget, so we try to anticipate everything and add in our factors of, of, you know, safety and contingency where, where we can, to try to anticipate as best we can where the project will come in.
And both Kane County and Lima are doing work in town right now, both are working to the dark.
I think it's great for the community that we're saving 37% of what was budgeted, I think that's amazing, I just, when you see that bigger delta, it's just, I needed to understand it. Big time.
I think we're really fortunate that this company, probably the kind of bidder had a reset price for their duct wire, because the toilet's duct wire right now is getting crazy expensive, and hard to get, another contractor in town told me that they were just quoted six months on a project.
Does anyone have any questions about the project, what you see in front of you, why they didn't provide us reading glasses with this document?
I got a landscape, it's still pretty hard to read.
Is there a reason why that this is so small?
That's just the way it comes out when we print that many pages, we should, we can print them independently, we can read that stuff.
Because we can put it on legal paper when we have.
It's so easy when I look into my computer and just blow it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, one last question, because I think it goes to the next motion that you're going to ask for, in that. Motion for the engineering to have an anticipated project schedule, is that low bid in line with this project schedule as presented in the next, and attachment E on page 27 is affected?
Page 27, because I did talk to Julie about that.
I believe it shows the initial project, construction layout, work for drawings on the fourth week of May, and then, observation documentation, I'm guessing that means they break ground on the first week of June.
Yes, when I talked to Julie, she said it could be sooner than that, based on an award tonight, because they do have a period, but that's their current state.
Understood.
Well, that is from Rock.
Gary.
At that same instance, we've already kind of delved into a little bit, talking about the engineering motion, I have no issue speaking about that before we vote on the first one, because they're kind of tied together, so does anyone have any questions about the engineering proposal that you see in front of you? We'll of course vote on these in order, but as long as we've started talking about them, I thought, just kind of speed things up, we'll talk about them together. If there are none, I will entertain a motion to award the water system connection project of the low bidder Kane County Excavating. Any other questions or comments? Vote, call, vote, please, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fordham.
Hi.
Motion pass six, zero.
Okay, and with that, I also entertain a motion to approve the professional services agreement with EEI for Phase Three Engineering Services.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
This comes out of this current fiscal year budget, correct?
This current year?
Correct.
No.
So this approval will hit next fiscal year's.
Well, a portion of it probably will hit this fiscal year, but the majority of it will be next, next budget year, it's, it's been, so we've obviously incurred no construction engineering, which is what this is, so 100% of that will happen if they start the first week of June in next fiscal year, and so it's been budgeted.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Any other questions or comments? I have a first and a second, Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fordham.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Motion pass six, zero.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hedges, Mr. Mayor, we would appreciate your consideration of a motion to authorize our staff to renew the medical, dental, and vision insurance for FY '23, we have a detailed summary of the proposal, as well as an agenda supplement from Ms. Lyons, and we'll review it briefly with you.
Okay, so, we're asking you to approve the renewals of our Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance program, we offer currently an HMO and a PPO plan to the employees, the approximate increase in medical insurance rates this year was 7.81%, that's a blended average when you consider the number of people on the PPO versus the HMO plans, we did not remarket our insurance this year, we do that every three years prior to the renewal of a police contract, our current police contract will be ending in April of 2023, so, next year at this time, we'll be looking at remarketing like we did two years ago. Also included in our renewals are our dental insurance, the Toprakure MetLife, there was no increase for the, how do you, the fourth year in a row, I believe, we, our last increase was 4% in 2018, and then finally, Vision Service Plan provides our vision insurance, that is in a two-year rate lock, so there was no increase with respect to that. We did ask for an alternate plan to our current PPO and HMO plans, and quite honestly, the plan is not quite as rich, it's still considered a platinum plan, however, we don't believe that the employees will be making a switch from their current plans, so, it's my recommendation that we renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield, MetLife, and VSP plans as they are currently the same.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lyons about the insurance renewal?
I have two, sure, the first one is, if I'm reading this right, that there is no deductible at all for the HMO?
That's correct.
And then the deductible, and I'm assuming this is the full deductible for the year, because most people pay the 3, 5,000, 10,000 for their deductibles, but.
I pay 150.
That's an high deductible.
Really?
Yeah. I don't pay 3,000.
I know the plans are different, but I'm just trying to figure out.
It's very low, we have a very, very rich plan.
What you're referring to is probably a high deductible plan, and then normally they come in with an HSA to support that.
They will look at the, I don't know, the healthcare.
This is, this is pretty different, we pay a majority of the premium, which is private sectorism.
So.
95% we pay.
It depends on the level of coverage that you have, so, like, an employee only that has the HMO plan pays only 5% of their premium, the village pays 95%, and then the, the amount of employee contribution increases as their coverage increases, so, if they cover their spouse and, and or all of their family.
What is, I mean, just the basic monthly fee then that, you know, fully pays for the insurance?
So we have an Affordable Care Act plan, which means we have age-based rates, so, like, for instance, myself, you look up my, my age as of May 1, and it's literally in the table that follows that.
Page 32.
On page 32, yep, you can look up my premium right there.
Okay, so that's for the entire year?
That is for the month.
Oh, that's for months. Okay, and that's the PPO?
The PPO is at the top, and the HMO is at the bottom.
Okay, so that's, that's the one that's based on age, and that's the one that we have, then, these are the two plans that we have, and these are the renewal rates, so these are the rates that will be effective May 1.
And by the way, it's not just because we have an Affordable Care, all health insurance, as a result of the Affordable Care Act, is now age-rated, even anybody else's insurance, not just because we're in that program.
Not exactly.
That's not happening.
And then, that's why I'm asking, because, I mean.
So we have composite rates as well, and those are listed on that same page 32, so we could go with an employee-only rate, if you look at the very bottom of each of the tables, there is what they call a composite rate, so if you cover the employee, I believe, the owner, the spouse, or, you know, the employee's family. But we chose not to do that, at the time we got the Affordable Care Act plan, there was a cost savings across the board, whether or not you were older like myself, or you were very young, there was a cost savings in the age band versus the composite rate, so we've just stuck with those the whole time.
People would kill for this policy. It's outstanding, and what concerns me is that the taxpayers are paying for it, and all the ones that are struggling to make their own healthcare bills, and, you know, to get their mortgage paid, their property taxes and everything else, that's, that's a lot, and then having to choose, paying for their health insurance or their drugs, et cetera, so, I mean, I just, I don't think it's really right that the private, the public sector should have all the taxpayers paying that much of it, but I'm not comparing that to any other taxing body anywhere, I'm just seeing this here, so I'm not comparing it to what other taxing bodies do, but to me, that's alarming, because taxpayers are struggling, I mean, I know families with huge deductibles, and they can never make it, so even with the Affordable Care Act, those that are on it, they're pretty much just paying and not getting anything out of it, because they have to have it, so.
I understand your point.
Just, yeah.
I, I understand your point, I just know that, like, we've struggled here at the village to compensate people in the village, you know, in relation to other communities involved, and so, like, you know, we try to do things like have better benefits and stuff like that, because, you know, we have to find a way to attract and retain quality employees, right, to do the jobs and that kind of thing, so, I totally get what you're saying, okay, in relationship to our residents and that kind of thing, but at the same time, I mean, as you look at this, like you said, wow, this is a pretty good insurance plan, so when you're making that decision to take employment somewhere, I mean, these are the kind of things that also impact, so you can go a little bit lower in the salary, if that's the case, because the insurance is going to cost you, so, I mean, I think that there's some give and take there, holistically, and I understand what you're saying.
I welcome all the trustees to go down to the public works garage and view what they do, view what they, wait, view what they do at 8 o'clock in the morning, two or three of them kids are already filthier than anybody at the end of the day, and the thousands of dollars they save the village, well worth it, so I encourage you to go down there and see what they do, mechanic-wise, because they saved the village a lot of money.
This isn't anything to do with their work and what they do, and I know they're hardworking, and I know we're looking at increasing of compensation, and that's wonderful, but 95%, that, to me, is unbelievable.
So, one of the things to keep in mind also is our troll contract, our FOP contract states in there that our insurance plans will stay substantially the same throughout the duration of the contract, and it also spells out the percentage that employees will pay, depending on HMO or PPO, so that, again, would be something that, you know, we don't want to discriminate between classes, so police don't get special provisions rather, you know, in comparison to other employees, so this would be something that would be negotiated during our next employment contract with the FOP.
Because this would lock us in, we're locked in for that particular contract, you have to.
This is correct, so.
That's just one idea on the contract, but this, this is pretty common, it's very difficult to practice.
Any other questions or comments about the renewal? Hearing done, I will entertain a motion to authorize staff to renew medical, dental, and vision insurance for fiscal year '23.
I'll make your motion.
Second. Any other questions, comments, concerns, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
No.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fordham.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Motion pass five, ayes, one upstate.
Thank you, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of circum municipal property, a 2017 Dodge Charger, I believe you have in your packets at some rate, being sold to Vito Enterprises for $8,000.
Correct. Do we have the new squads yet?
I have one, the other one will be probably Monday, and then they'll be working on the other ones.
Are they nice? Are they faster than any of the other ones that we have?
What brand are they?
Dodge.
Can you just ask if you can drive it? No, no, I just want, I just.
I thought the Durangos.
Do they have a spot for tow-strapping vehicles? Stock acceleration test.
No, we got rid of the Durangos, because they were too small inside, and a pretty ride, we got the Explorers to replace them.
Actually, we upgraded it, chief had a Durango over here for about a couple of weeks, and they all we had to try it out.
Everybody drove it, everybody loved it, it's a lot better.
The Durango's a lot bigger than the Charger, Durango's a lot bigger than the Taurus as well. No.
A Ugo's bigger than the Taurus.
They were pretty happy, they were pretty happy with the, with the Durango.
Dodge.
Okay, other than some grumbling about the brand, does anybody have any question about selling one of the Dodges? We'll have one last.
You know, we, we get contracted Vito to outfit our police vehicles with all of the equipment that's needed, communications, everything else, is all of that removed from the vehicle before selling it?
Yes, yes, everything that we can transfer to a new vehicle will be taken out, in has been.
Okay.
There's always just been an issue with, like, the cages, right?
Yeah, cages won't.
Because they go to the states, and then to the SUV garage, some stuff like that.
And there's some things that are worn out, because usually these cars last five to seven years, and the light bars are starting to go, so we do upgrade them.
I was just curious, because I was looking at the, in the supplement memo, it says in the Kelly Blue Book, this matches the cost or the estimated value, but when I was typing in that year, that many miles for the V6 base model, it like, went up from the worst condition, because I assumed they were pretty heat up.
Oh, yeah.
It's worth more than $8,000.
If you look at the trade-in value of the SE model, which I think this is, if there is something, it's the absolute lowest, it has no carpeting. So. But trade-in value.
Used for this type of vehicle.
Right, it's very difficult to price, but he's right in the middle there, otherwise I would have said, no, we would have bought it.
And we're not going to have to pay to destroy this either, so we'd have to pay for that if we were to sell to somebody else.
And not remember, but having seen them parked, not having been in it, the backseat is actually plastic, so it's not even like a real backseat.
Correct, right, and now that, if, like, so that.
You don't want to drop by and drug to jail.
That's, that's, that is why I'm terrified, I've seen them parked. eBay, eBay would charge us a fee if they were to sell it, so, so we're doing well.
A little bit of a hassle, because you, you used to sell your old squads on eBay or cab company, right?
Right, taking pictures, advertising, vetting, everything, and.
So it's easier, I'm guessing, it goes to other.
Yeah, or else overseas, in fact, we put them on the open, where they go.
I just, in the supplement, we say, reference Kelly, and it's like.
It's hard to find a match for a police.
Just in case somebody didn't look through.
Take the worst price and then subtract more.
Okay, I will entertain, don't make me beg and gavel, don't make me do it. I will entertain a motion authorizing the sale of certain municipal property, 2017 Dodge Charger. Questions, comments, concerns?
Ms. Clerk, can you go on?
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Palestinian.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Kirk.
Aye.
Ms. Soder.
Aye.
Motion can six zeros.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Mayor, we would ask you all to relax a little bit and enjoy this. This is going to be a presentation. This is, we've talked about educational presentations. We only have one so far, two so far. This is one that will, at the end of the day, have a price tag on it and I will tell you upfront. But development in Hampshire has accelerated, I think we can all agree with that. What we're finding is that we have developers on the northwest side of town, on the southwest side of town, northeast side of town, three corners of town really that are expanding in mechanics. And we, it's been over 15 years since we did a master plan for the village and evaluated our water and sewer systems. That has to do with filtration systems as well as distribution systems, the number of wells we have and so forth. What we did today was we'll ultimately take off one as part of the extension of water system up north, we'll be shutting down one of our water treatment plants at Norton. So that's going to put additional capacity on the southern system, on the overall whole system now. So what we've asked EEI to do, several of us, Lori, Josh, myself, Mark Montgomery, we all went down to EEI for a day a couple of weeks ago and we've talked now for probably three months, working up to this day to prepare for an overall master review of the entire system. So what Steve Dennison is going to do, Steve is our water and sewer specialist from Dennison, he's from EEI and he's been working with Mark for several years and really part of the department. And so Steve has worked with all of EEI and ourselves and put together this presentation tonight primarily to educate you on what we have in the system now, what some of our strengths and what our weaknesses are and then how we have to evaluate that so we can be prepared for development. For example, I've got Barrow Hill Ventures on the east side of town asking, where can we connect the water and sewer systems? Do you want to run, they're going to spend maybe $2 to $3 million extending water and sewer to them? How do we, where do we want that route to go? We have a pre-plan that. On the northwest end of town, we have a lot of development up by the truck stop, it'll be further west or further northwest on Route 20 and there's no water past Eldorado up that way. We haven't, we haven't pre-planned that area for over 15 years. So some of the pre-planned routes that we have for water and sewer may or may not be correct anymore. And then we have a lot of, lot of mechanical systems that also require maintenance and were neglected for a long time. We've had two years now where we've been spending quite a bit more to maintain those systems, but it's really time for us as a village to stop and take stock of where we are and make a plan for the future. And that will be a plan that will finance all of the capital improvements that we'll find during the study. So I'm going to have Steve make his presentation. There's no access, excuse me, there's no, Steve, if you want to go ahead and share your screen, please. There's no action required tonight. This will be for education and then also for questions.
To members of our audience, if you want to move your chairs around so you can watch the TV rather than turning your head, now would be the time to do that. Just turn the lights a little bit.
As people are maneuvering around there, I just want to check to make sure you can hear me okay.
We hear you great.
Thanks for being here tonight. Great. You're very welcome.
Want some popcorn?
Yeah, for sure. She, did you drink popcorn?
I should have, I know what you were.
St. Patrick's Day. I think you're all going to feel like you need a drink in your hand by the end of this presentation. Hopefully I won't make it drag on too long here, but as Jay mentioned, I'm Steve Dennison with Engineering Enterprises. I've been with EEI since 2004 and actually going back to that time, I've been working with Hampshire on water and sewer related items. So I have some firsthand knowledge going back to a lot of the improvements that were made back to the 2004 time period and I am hoping to be able to do a little education as to, for some of you, you may not realize everything that's involved in the water and sewer systems. So it's a little bit of an education from that standpoint as well as obviously talk about planning efforts, things that have been done previously and most notably what would be anticipated to be done with planning efforts if this project were to move forward. So with that, I am going to advance the slides. Is everything advancing correctly there?
Looks great.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to break this up into four main pieces. The presentation, that is background and overview of, you know, why is planning a good thing to do, the planning approach that we are proposing to take here, an overview of the existing water and wastewater systems. This is more of the educational background component of it, particular to Hampshire. And then wrap up with a discussion about the approach for the comprehensive water and wastewater master plan project. So background and overview, planning benefits. Number one, you can target specifically for the village. So obviously with this plan, that's what we would be doing. It's not just a generic plan that you pull off the shelf or off the internet. This is something that is going to be done specifically with the village's infrastructure in mind. It also provides an understanding of the existing and future needs. So you can really evaluate what the conditions and capacities are of your existing infrastructure, looking at the history, understanding what led to the current state of matters with previous developments that came in and how it impacted growth and the development of infrastructure over time and how things have changed. As we know, in the 2008 to 2010 timeframe, development activity certainly changed and that had a lasting impact on the infrastructure in Hampshire and we see those impacts to this day. We also want to understand what the future needs are. And Jay had mentioned that previously in his introductory comments where there's development activity, there's either developments going on or there's interest and an understanding of what that, the developments are going to do and how they're going to impact the infrastructure is a critical component to this. And then it provides a roadmap for implementing the improvement. So when you understand what the existing and future needs are, then it helps you identify how you are going to get the improvements done that you deem are necessary for the village's infrastructure moving forward. Previous planning studies, there were various studies that were done in the early to mid 2000s as you would expect, along with the surge in development activity around that time. Since, you know, 2007, 2008 timeframe, there has been no studies done that coincided with the slowdown and stopping of the development activity. Rule of thumb, this is just meant as a show of the rule of thumb, that communities typically try to update their plans every 10 years or so, but of course, that varies from community to community depending on the particular needs and developments that might be going on that might be driving the need for a study. Second item that we're going to cover here is the planning approach. So this is generally how we are suggesting the planning approach to be done for Hampshire. So first item is defining the current needs, looking at the existing infrastructure, conditions of the existing infrastructure capacities, what remaining capacity it has for development and identifying that and that rolls into defining the future needs. So that's really getting an understanding of what development activity is occurring and anticipated to occur, what are your population projections, how is that anticipation of growth going to play into the need for your water and wastewater infrastructure growth? So, you know, at what trigger point are you going to need to add additional water supply or treatment or storage? You know, how is your water distribution network going to need to change as if development increases in this particular geographical location of the village versus others? So those are the things that would be evaluated there. Identify estimated costs for the needs, pretty self-explanatory, but once you identify what those needs are, preparing cost estimates is an essential component of moving forward to being able to prioritize what your needs are. So that's driven by where you think development activity is going to occur as well as the cost for improvements and what improvements need to happen sooner rather than later. And that goes into the development of an implementation plan and really the last step kind of goes along with that, which is develop the plan to finance the improvement. So in addition to developing this prioritization plan and implementation plan as far as the phasing and schedule and timing of when the improvements may need to occur, you also need to understand how you're going to pay for those improvements. And so, you know, what can the village's existing rates and funding structure afford with the needs that, that are required and what are the potential opportunities for additional funding sources that can be used to supplement? Are there, you know, rate increases that may need to be required and what would those look like and how would those be phased over time to meet the specific demands that the implementation plan that has been developed through the study would identify? All right, I'm going to move into our overview of the existing water and wastewater systems unless there are any questions to this point because it's going to get into a lot of overview of the systems and kind of the finer details of the, of the infrastructure there. I just, I just have one and I'm sorry if I missed this. You said the last time we completed a study like this was, you know, longer than 15 years ago. Do you know exactly when that was? It wasn't a study that comprehensively looked at water and sewer. They were broken out individually previously depending on development needs. I believe the last one was dated 2007 if, if I remember correctly and I don't remember if that was a water or sewer plan. There was a flurry of activity going on at that time and so it was really kind of a scramble to keep ahead of the development with the planning. So it was kind of as needed, things were done back then. So the only, so the only thing we have anything coming close is that it's not a plan like this that was completed in 2007. Correct. You've never done something comprehensive like this. I'm just clarifying. Thank you.
Can I throw in one more question too then? Is if we did that last one about 2006, '05, '07, somewhere around there, a lot of the subdivisions that we have had on the books were on the books then, they just had to kind of go dormant for the last 15 years. So were those subdivisions taken into account in '07, '08 when this was last done?
That is correct. A lot of the, a lot of the planning that was done then applies to what was done, but as you know, some of the development activity has changed. You know, the, the type of development, you know, has changed over time, where those developments are scheduled to phase in is the other item that has to be taken into consideration. And also, you know, what does the existing infrastructure look like in those areas compared to, you know, what is going to be needed to service those development areas?
If I may briefly, the last comprehensive plan was finalized in 2004, updated in 2008. It doesn't account for the majority of the developments that have yet to come to pass. Hey, but that, that was not water and sewer, Brian. This is, this is just water and sewer. Just wondering. You're talking about comprehensive plan, plan and zoning down.
Okay, yeah, because I'm just trying to figure out if they, if they had taken into account how much water, sewage, all that when they were putting these plots of subdivision down and improving them so many years.
Many of the paper lots were still there. I think we should probably try to get through this presentation, but many of the paper lots were there, but the timing has obviously changed because they went dormant, most of them for 10 or 15 years. And now what we're, what we're, water consumption has changed for person.
Okay.
A lot of things have changed and we're seeing a lot more industrial and commercial development than we were back then too.
Okay, okay.
It, it's a good question, very much so, because one important point to note is that the skeleton, the, the major skeleton of the water and sewer networks are well-established in size to handle a lot of additional development activity. So, you know, that we're building on those backbones of the infrastructure that was created before. It's more of, you know, what's, how are some of those developments going to be phased in? How do we provide the water and sewer service to them, building off of those backbones? And what has changed from then till now that has to be considered with those plans?
Steve, let me just make one other point because it is significant. When, after '08, all of the redevelopment agreements were renegotiated. You know, I got an email from you today about that's what happened to Sprinter System. But at the same time, they were, they negotiated their way out of some of the public improvements. For example, we know that the village has a responsibility to build a water treatment plant in Thames Farm where this tower is there. That's our responsibility. We've known that since the development agreement was renegotiated in 2012, but we've never planned this funding for it. We have a lift station that we know we're obligated to build in Oak Step as part of the negotiations there. And we've never, we've never, first of all, it's been partially installed and then abandoned for 15 years and we need to evaluate the status of it and then make a working order. But when does that have to come online in order to meet the demand of the community and development? So there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts and a lot of parts that are getting old after all these years too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to continue with the delve into the existing water and wastewater systems here. You're not going to be able to read much off this map, but the, the point I want to make here is that from a land area perspective, the wastewater system infrastructure is very spread out. There is again, the backbone that runs through the system as far as being able to convey sewage from the extents of the geographical area down to the wastewater treatment facility, which is the endpoint for, for the entire sewer system network within the village. But, you know, there is that backbone there. It's just a matter of identifying how the spurs would, would be go out to the new development activity and making sure those are sized properly and how to phase in different things related to lift stations and which are going to help convey the flows down and also improvements at the wastewater treatment facility. So just a very high level overview of wastewater collection. So this would be the piping, the sanitary piping. You have 45 miles, sewer ranging in diameter from eight to 36 inches, so quite a range there. The 36 inches are the, the large interceptors that provide the backbone to the extents of the, of the collection system. There's also five lift stations or pumping stations that help convey flows because of the change in topography throughout the village. It can't all flow by gravity down to the wastewater plant and it's accompanied by 31,000 feet of force main, which is the pressure pipe on the discharge side of the lift stations. There's the Harmony Road Interceptor Service Area, which is targeted to serve the north and northeastern development area, which was previously constructed, as well as the Hampshire Creek Interceptor Service Area, which was previously constructed and that targets the southeastern development area.
Quick question on the wastewater part. Is an eight-inch pipe meet the minimum requirements for wastewater pipes?
Yes, it does. Depending on the amount of flow it is meant to convey and the slope that it is installed in, that is the minimum size pipe that you could use in a collection system. Then there are services that come out obviously from homes that are smaller diameter that would tie into an eight-inch pipe or larger.
Eight inches is a acceptable size.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that'll change when we get to the water side of things with existing water main infrastructure that you have, but on the sanitary size, there's nothing that we've identified that's undersized for what you need.
Okay.
The I-90 area is a particular location wanted to focus on because of potential development activity in that area. So the planning and construction of the infrastructure here happened around the late 90s and very early 2000s. So it's a little more dated and doesn't account for a lot of additional development activity up in this area, especially when you get on the north side of I-90. So this is an area that would be targeted for, for a study to really identify what a plan would be for improving and increasing the capacity of the sanitary capabilities of this area to promote additional development up there. In particular, the lift stations are. In particular, the lift stations are of concern. They're getting pretty old from a lift station perspective where they're in a 20, 25 year old range. And the conditions of them are not great. And the capacity to convey the flows from that area. Really need to be investigated further as well. It's a long ways to get from the I-90 corridor all the way down to the wastewater treatment facility. So that needs to be investigated to see how that can be most effectively done. The wastewater treatment facility is the is another area I want to, I want to focus on. This is an aerial of. The wastewater treatment facility as it currently stands. I like to show this as a matter of perspective. Which this is what the original wastewater treatment facility looked like until. The early 2000s. So you can see how much it's changed since the year basically 2000 until now, about 20 years. That that has increased significantly in size and I'll relay that to capacity here. So. Brief history, it was the the capacity was 0.46 MGD, design average flow as million gallons per day. Design average flow. And then there was an expansion done in 2003. To 0.75 million gallons per day. So a little less than doubling the capacity. So that's where the first major improvements happened where it changed the process of the wastewater treatment. And and modernized it quite a bit to make it more effective in meeting the regulations. Established by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. And then because of the development activity, there was a flurry of improvements and modifications and expansions. That were done to the wastewater treatment facilities between 2003 and 2010. So it doubled in capacity of in 2008 to 1.5 million gallons per day. And then in 2010, it expanded to 2.76 billion gallons per day. So. You know, between 2000 and 2010, if you want to look at it this way. The capacity of the plant expanded by six times. So that's very aggressive and very quick. To be able to grow that much and, but it was needed to be able to. Get the permits required to stimulate the development activity that was going on at that time. So the current average, daily average flow at the facility is about 1 million gallons per day. So as you can see, it hasn't even reached the capacity of what, when the plant was expanded in 2008. It has been hovering around that 1 million gallons per day, slowly increasing obviously with development activity here. But it hasn't been a, hasn't been a rapid growth to the flow. So the plant is, has plenty of capacity in it. It's a matter of understanding where the trigger point is going to be related to development activity. That is going to require the implementation turning on of other processes. So currently. Because the plant is only about half loaded, little less than half loaded. The operators currently only use about half of the plant for the the liquid treatment train. And I don't need to get into the weeds too much here. I'm sure you all appreciate that being a the wastewater topic, but. They, the operators are doing what they can to save energy costs. So they reduce the amount of equipment that is utilized for the treatment. But at some point, there's going to, a trigger is going to occur. Where the other portion of the facility is going to have to be put back online. And getting an understanding of what that trigger point is. And frankly, what improvements are going to need to be made in order to make that part of the plan operational again. Needs to be better understood and quantified with cost.
Steve, I'm going to ask first if you can move a little quicker when I finish asking my question. I would like you just to describe the fact that the two trains, you've got a nice picture here to describe it, the fact that we're only operating one. And that that will be a big part of the study as well.
Correct, thank you. And I appreciate your bluntness, Jay. I will speed it up.
We're asking questions too.
Sorry, I do have a question on that. On the current estimated usage of 1 million gallons per day, what? We know what was the back of the study with the residential. I know some of the commercial is new with the presidential, but the estimated total. Average daily flow was estimated to get to, should all the development be completed?
Basically, if you multiply by 100 because the flow calculation is 100 gallons per person per day. So it equates to 2.76 MGD is meant to handle about 27,600 population.
Okay, so there, even with everything built out, we're not at capacity at this facility, I would imagine. Because our latest census was like 700.
7600 or 200, number 272 in the state.
Well, I guess the reason that I just bring that up for our consideration when we talk later is. Mr. Hedges brought up that we're obligated in the Tams Farm community to also have a wastewater treatment.
Sorry, water treatment, not wastewater.
They're doing it through water treatment and wastewater? And the lift station versus, there was a well different than a water treatment facility?
Yeah, a well is a well and then you have to treat that. A well is in the ground. Then you treat it with a treatment facility and then you have a tank or a tower.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was related because it was brought up during the wastewater.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, so there's wastewater and then we call it.
So we'll get back to that when we talk about our regular drinking water.
Big difference. The only thing I wanted to point out in this picture is you can see one of those circles is completely empty. It's not even being utilized. And that's 50% capacity, but we've been robbing parts from that one train for the other train. So. It could cost us a couple million dollars just to get that other half of this train out of there. That's it. And we are going, we're starting to see the future that. Is close enough that that train is going to have to be turned on soon, we believe, in the next few years. And and at some point in the study, we'll get to. Population equivalents. We could look at each subdivision and tell you exactly how many people and how much water and sewage treatment that they will require. That's all, that's all part of what we're doing. So I think, Steve, if you move a little closer, we'll be able to get the big picture.
Message received. Going into turbo mode. Okay. Along with wastewater treatment, there you have regulations. So that's established by your MPDS permit. That's given to you by the IEP that actually the US EPA has some jurisdiction over as well. Major thing related to the permitting is phosphorus. It's nutrient removal. So you you have a requirement to remove phosphorus to a certain amount and there's going to be a more stringent requirement that's going to kick in in the year 2030. The plant is currently set up to be able to handle that, to meet that requirement, but there are ramifications. That that occur because of that on the solid side. Of things that need to be studied, evaluated, costs identified in an implementation plan. Put into into action. There's a handful of other special conditions here that I won't go into for the sake of time. And Hampshire Creek, as are a lot of streams, receiving streams across Illinois. Is on the 303D list for impaired waterways mainly because of phosphorus, but also for a handful of other constituents and. The the sampling has been good in the creek in recent years, but there's still some, some things that that are going to occur that will be impacted by that. Items to evaluate on the wastewater side of things, getting that second treatment train online. We talked about that a little earlier. Bio-solus process improvements, just touched on that because of nutrient regulations that causes the process. Is adapted and it causes an increase in wasting, which increases bio solids. And that needs to be evaluated and a plan determined for that. There are a couple of lift stations that require some evaluation to understand. How to modify, improve, expand them, including the Oakstead and Higgins Road lift stations. There are proposed system improvements for new developments, including in north areas. And there's also needs to be a plan to maintain the existing infrastructure. There was a lot of infrastructure put in when development activity was at its peak. And a lot of it is, has been oversized for the last 10 years or so. Including things that haven't been needed that have essentially been mothballed. So. There's a, there's some activity and analysis that needs to occur to understand. Where improvements need to happen to make sure that those systems are ready to go when they are needed. Okay, moving into the existing water work system. So again, not going to dwell on this too much, but just an overview map and I'll get into more details here in subsequent slides. There are four wells that are spread across the village. You have three water treatment facilities that treat the water with cat and exchange. Basically, large water softeners. There are storage, so elevated water storage tanks that you are the landmarks that you see when you're driving across the village. And then there's booster pump stations and PRVs due to the changing terrain, topography. Across the village to make sure that the pressures in the in the distribution system are appropriate for all the customers.
One question quickly, out of four active deep wells, which ones are giving us the most problems?
Well 7, which is going away, is probably the biggest culprit. That's the one that's going to go away with the connection. That was talked about earlier in the meeting. So well 7 has. Hydrogen sulfide in it, which is basically rotten egg smell. Now they, there is some treatment that's done for it, but that's caused. Some complaints up in that area in the in the I-90 corridor. That will go away when the, when the interconnection is made. The other, the other wells have been. Have been good. They've provided the water. It's good quality water. And yeah, there there hasn't been any issues with wells nine, 10, and 13.
Thank you.
So again, mentioned the four active deep sandstone wells. All those wells are drilled down to about 1,200 feet below ground, just to give you a scale of magnitude there. Wells nine, 10, and 13, which are the ones that will remain, pump about 1,000 gallons per minute. Up to about 1,200 gallons per minute as a matter of fact. Well 7's has a lower capacity of about 300 gallons per minute. That's the one that's going to be abandoned and taken offline. The raw water exceeds the radium standard, so cat and exchange removes the radium to be able to. To meet the the regulatory standard. It also softens the water to give it a higher quality. Not all communities do that. The north system interconnection is going to be occurring this year. You know about that. Talked about that earlier. So the well 7 water treatment plant will be removed. Well, well 12 is another one I wanted to touch on here. That's the Tams Farm area that Jay mentioned. So there has been a well. That was constructed right when development activity stalled back in 2007, 2008 timeframe. So that has a whole history that I don't need, don't need to get into right now, but it's a much deeper well, about 2,000 feet deep. Has the same capacity as your other deep wells, being about 1,000 gallons per minute. However, because of the water quality from that well. There has to be an analysis of what treatment would be best utilized for that if it were to be used moving forward. There is obviously an advantage to using a well in that area because there are no other wells. In in that area and it provides supply in an area of need. So and it's also. The highest elevation in the village. So from an energy perspective, it makes sense. To pump it into the tower there and use gravity to help provide pressures as needed throughout the rest of the distribution system. So again, don't need to get into too much detail on that, but understand there is a well that is drilled there. With a pump and motor that's installed, but it's been installed for a long time. Will likely need to be removed and replaced whenever that well is utilized. So there are some analysis that needs to occur with well 12 and how that can be utilized and implemented.
Do all the wells pull from the same aquifer?
Yes.
Wells nine, 10, and 13 all pull from the same aquifer. Which is the Ironton Galesville Sandstone Formation. Well 7 pulls from an upper, a sandstone formation that's a little above that called the St. Peter Formation. That is about 7, 800 feet deep. This well 12 is open to the Mount Simon and Eau Claire formations, which are much deeper. The Mount Simon is a sandstone formation and so is the Eau Claire. And so there's different water qualities that occur down there. I can go into more detail and more history if you like, but I'll I'll leave it at that.
The only question that I have regarding the aquifers is there's so much talk in other municipalities about. Aquifers being in trouble and drying up and all that kind of stuff. Are we in danger in the end stuff?
You are not in any immediate danger. Something we're going to look at is the history and the trending of your water levels. Given the lack of usage in your geographical location. It's not something to be overly concerned about. Huntley does use quite a bit from the Ironton Gillsville Formation. So to your northeast, there is a fairly heavy draw from that formation, but. It's not, hasn't been significantly impacting things where it's a concern in the next 10 or 15 years. Yeah, you've probably seen a lot of discussion with communities like Yorkville, Montgomery, Oswego, Juliet. That water from wells is becoming a real issue. That's not an immediate concern for you.
Respectfully, if you're saying 10, 15 years and you've seen how we like to do plans around here, is there any way that we can kind of go a little bit further in the future?
Yeah, we can, we can trend it moving a little bit further out for sure. Based on the tools that we have, the modeling tools that we have available to us. We can, we can look at those trends a little bit further out. And of course, that's impacted by development activity and anticipated usage too.
And so to clarify for my identification, by immediate concern, you're talking that 10 to 15 year timeframe?
I think you're talking beyond that.
I feel very confident that you don't have anything to be concerned about in the next 10 to 15 years. I I could say 20 to 30 years and feel fairly confident about that, but that'll, that depends on a lot of factors we don't know right now.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, storage, speaking of no concern, you don't have much concern with storage. You have a lot of, a lot of storage in the air in Hampshire. And so the 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 last one that was constructed was the Tams Farm Elevator Water Storage Tank, which is the large one, 2 million gallon tank. You have enough storage for a population of approximately 25,000 people.
And when you say provide adequate storage for a population of approximately 25,000. How long does that provide that water for that population of the storage? What's the, is that for a day, a week, a month? Something catastrophic happened, we had to use storage. What's the timeframe of usage over that?
Yeah, it takes into account emergency fire flows. So I apologize, I don't have that number off the top of my head as far as the amount of time for duration of fire flow. But tho- those things are taken into account when you're looking at storage and capacity. It's, you're looking at your worst case scenario. If you have a major event and you're you're using that for to combat a fire.
We talk about the tower at north on Route 20. The north system has about 48 hours worth of water if we couldn't pump anything into it.
How many?
About 48 hours with the water.
So the 500,000 gallons is about 4, 48 hours.
Yeah.
That's a lot different to what we were told previously.
That's industrial. It's industrial, but it's primarily industrial. It's very little.
Yeah, keep, keep in mind that well 7, well 7 water treatment plant and the Route 20 Elevated Water Storage Tank are its own system. Right now and not connected to the rest of the system. So. Yeah, those metrics are for that, but you know, it's a scale of magnitude if you think about the rest of the system that way. There's. There, there's a lot of capacity with storage.
Okay.
And a lot of redundancy.
Correct. Distribution, I mentioned this a little bit earlier about the water main size. So you have 58 miles of of water main. That's pretty amazing when you think about it. The network all throughout the village, the water main sizes range from four to 16 inches in diameter. Four, four and six inches not commonly used and not advised to use uncommon design principles. So typically you're going a minimum eight inch diameter water main. So I have down here a little bit further, you have 14,000 feet of four inch main and 21,000 feet of six inch main. Part of the evaluation is understanding, you're coming up with a plan for how you replace. Particularly the four inch main, which is the most troublesome. Because, you know, things can happen with a four inch main based on pressure. Uh, because you know, things can happen with a four inch main uh based on pressures uh throughout the distribution system and it's, it's important to re, uh come up with a plan to replace that four inch main over time and update the system. Also approximately eleven percent of the system is about sixty to seventy years old and getting pretty close to the end of useful life. Um, so water main replacement programs are commonly done in communities and that would be something that is discussed and implemented here is coming up with that plan for water main replacement. Uh, rely, so items to evaluate reliability, redundancy and water quality. Of course, those are, you know, kind of uh backbones of your water system. You want to make sure that you can reliably provide it, that you have enough redundancy in order to provide it reliably, reliably, and obviously water quality uh both from a regulatory and an aesthetic perspective. Um, want to make sure we're meeting the village's goals uh for, for those aspects. Related to that is the fact that there's not backup power at any of the, of the faci- facilities currently. So that's been brought up on a handful of occasions uh by staff and there's been a lot of discussion about that. And so there would be an evaluation of the benefits of adding backup power generators, uh permanent generators at any uh of the facilities.
Would, would uh solar be considered?
Solar will not power. We're talking three hundred fifty to four hundred horsepower pumps for the wells.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, solar is gonna get, gonna give you lighting and that's about it. Tams Farm, well number twelve rehab and water treatment plant. We talked about that earlier, a game plan for implementing that along with development activity. Uh, proposed system improvements for new developments, particularly in the north area and Briar Hill. Water system modeling and planning. So I just want to touch on this very quickly. Um, water system modeling is done. It's a computer program that is able to simulate how your water distribution system operates and where you would anticipate the, the flows that you would anticipate um at different points throughout your distribution system, depending on uh different scenarios that might occur. And so it's really important both to identify how strong your system is, but also to be able to, be able to uh react quickly to development requests when you need to identify if you have adequate flow and pressure in a particular area in your distribution system. So you can easily pull up the model, uh, understand what the demand for that development is going to be and identify if your infrastructure is already built out to be able to supply water there or if improvements would need to be made. So updating this, the water system model um is an important component of being able to understand and react quickly in those scenarios. On revenue water analysis or water audit, basically this is uh digging into the weeds of are you billing as much water as possible for what you are pumping out of the ground and treating? So there is always going to be some level of water loss that occurs between the time that you pump the water out of the ground to uh the tap. But what you try to do is you try to minimize that because obviously that costs uh the village money, any water that they're not able to bill. So I know that staff has done a great job of identifying uh some things that have really reduced uh the water loss, but this would be getting into even further details to help reduce that even further. And then a plan to maintain and replace the existing infrastructure, all those items there. We've talked about that um previously. So want to roll now into the comprehensive water and wastewater master plan project approach. So this is what we are proposing to be included into scope for this study. Yes.
Five minutes to wrap up.
Okay.
He's close.
I, I will, I will be done in two. How about that?
Don't shortchange us.
All right. So background information and data analysis, understanding what's their conditions, capacities. Um, roll that into reviewing the existing and future service areas and identify uh the needs uh in those areas. Water distribution and planning model, we just talked about this. Um, creating an updated model to be able to react quickly. A water and wastewater system evaluations, recommendations. So this gets into all the items uh to evaluate that I identified in previous slides for water and wastewater. Um, and then creating a plan for implementing those cost estimates uh to go along with them. Uh, water and sewer rate study. So capital improvement plan preparation. Um, connection fee option and rate options would be identified and then a report and presentation. So the proposed fee would be a little under two hundred thousand dollars all in with all of those scope items. Yes, I know that is not a number to sneeze at. Completely aware of that. We've had lots of conversations with staff uh about that. Uh, what would go into the scope and fee? That's currently where we're at. Uh, we are using our two thousand twenty standard schedule of charges. So we're using our rates from a couple of years ago to help develop this in order to try to help uh make it as um palatable as possible, I guess I should say. And then the proposed schedule, majority of the analysis would be completed in eight to ten months. And then twelve months for final completion. That would be around the time that I would be coming back and providing a report uh and presentation uh to, to you.
So a question is, is that one N B A nine oh three representative of the budget we're going to talk about later today?
Yes. And I just want to say one thing about that number and then uh I, I, I knew he was near to the last slide and that's why I shortened it a little bit. I wouldn't give you all time to ask questions too. One thing I want to mention how we got to this point really. Uh, we talked all about the development and other things that happened. We were doing piecemeal studies. We needed, we really need to evaluate our wastewater treatment plant. When do we need to turn on that second train? We're sure it's coming soon. Uh, when are we going to need things at different locations? And we were starting to engage in studies and look at study proposals that were coming up for seventy five hundred thousand dollars, but they were piecemeal. And we weren't really getting the big picture. So we asked EEI step back, take all those proposals off the table and combine them all into one comprehensive proposal. And that's what this is. So this is actually the sum of the parts is actually less. Does that go? The whole is less than the sum of the parts. We took all of those studies independently. What process?
And so uh I know it's a lot of money.
We're not here to approve anything.
I know, I know. It's a lot of money, but I want to keep in mind, I want this board to just think about this, right? We've got a lot of stuff coming. There's a lot of projects that we've talked about over the years. As far as even like repaving streets and that kind of stuff, this all plays into it because we don't know what's underneath each street. We don't know the condition and that kind of stuff. This is going to be able to help the village help with a long-term plan. And while some may say, okay, two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for a study, right? But we haven't done anything like this ever, right? So when it comes to even talking about water rates and that kind of stuff, we're just we have a mentality around here where we throw stuff at a wall and see what sticks, right? And so when you try to plan for the future, long range, gap and development, that kind of stuff, this, this is stuff that's needed. And so that's why I felt confident in Mr. Hedges' recommendation to bring this presentation to the board. I mean, we've had this on the, on the drinking water side. A few times we've had a, not, not, not a study like this, but we've had a couple of presentations um to kind of like level set with the board. Um, and so that's why I thought that it was important that uh that you guys hear this. Mr. Uh, well, let's put it this way. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dunson or would like Mr. Dunson to go into detail? I know that we're trying to keep things moving along here, but I also want to make sure that the trustees have an opportunity to ask the questions that they want to answer.
I just, I have one clarifying one. First, Mr. Dunson, thank you for the presentation and for putting this together and your patience with me and seeking some of the understanding, some of those things. I know I got some things mixed up earlier, so I appreciate your clarification. Uh, one question I have for you is when we talk about the water mains and we talked about the four inch to the larger sized pipes and you had said four to six are not recommended. Would EEI in the current stance ever, I shouldn't say ever, but would you, would EEI currently approve development plans that contained any four to six inch water main pipes?
No.
Okay. So it's not a question of they're below where we would hope they are. It's that they wouldn't even be approved today.
Correct.
What would be the minimum?
Eight inch.
Eight. Okay. There's eight. It's, it's eight with a recommendation for ten or just eight's good enough?
Eight is, eight is sufficient and in certain conditions, that's the minimum that we would recommend.
Minimum. Okay.
And, and we haven't looked at the leakage report in a while that shows where all the leaks happen. But if you look at Twilliger, we have a four inch line there. It's, it's all up and down Twilliger. It's, it's just a really expensive stretch of road to repair because there's so much infrastructure there and the road itself. But that's all, all the breaks you had in it and that four inch line.
And it was, it was four inch line we had to replace down mains when we did all that work. As a, well before my time, but that was like ten years ago or something.
There's a lot of damage.
Would they increase the sidewalks? Yeah, when they increased, I dug it up and, and redid pipes. That, that was four inch, right? Or some of it had gone from like six to four to six.
It was piecemeal.
Yeah.
That's right.
That was a long time ago.
Was that, that should be eight. But we aren't, Streetscape's gonna dig all that up again. Again.
Yeah.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Edges or Mr. God, or Mr. Dunson?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just reiterate again really quickly. You know, my contact information is on the last slide here. If anybody, I'm that's what we're here for. If anybody has questions when it talks through, want to better understand any of this, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm more than happy to to talk with you, meet with you, exchange emails, however you like it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Mr. President, we would ask for, uh, I would ask your indulgence for uh those lines. It's going to present uh the, an introduction to the FY twenty three annual budget. So she gets your screen shared.
You guys are welcome to move your chairs back for another budget. Sorry, I was strung involved.
That's part of the entertainment.
It's exercise.
We really need to talk.
Yeah. Well, I'm going with, you know, like you're obviously at the edge of your chairs, like so excited about this.
I don't know what's more exciting, wastewater or the budget.
All right, from wastewater to fiscal twenty two, twenty three.
Color maps.
Right.
Okay, so tonight's objective is um to highlight the changes that we have made since the review and input from the budget committee meetings. I'm going to present an overview of the budget structure and process, uh describe the goals and objectives um of our budget. So the changes that have been made since the meeting we held um with the budget committee include increasing the sidewalk program to twenty thousand dollars this year. Um, funding of Poon Creek Country Days and Hampshire Area Chamber of Commerce at their requested levels. An update to fund fifty two, which had some um formula errors, I would call it, um during the budget presentation. And then uh a simple reallocation of utility capital improvement funds um within the operating funds for the utilities. So to provide you with an overview, the village is required to, to adopt an annual budget each year prior to the start of the fiscal year. Corporate authorities shall make a tentative budget available for public inspection at least ten days prior to the passage of the budget. Um, we're in a unique position this particular year in that this presentation actually precedes our next meeting by three weeks. But our, um, just because there's an extra Thursday in there. Um, but we will be making the budget available at the front counter and on the website for anyone to view. And then at the next meeting, um, we will be having the public hearing as well as hopefully the adoption of the budget. So we're required, um, not less than one week after the publication of the budget and prior to the final action, action have a a public hearing for that purpose. And then the public hearing is required to be published in the newspaper. And Linda and I will coordinate that together. I suspect that it will be published in the Daily Herald. Um, to talk about the budget process very quickly, um, I was very proud of myself because I made this little wheel. Um, implement the budget, which is nearly like at eleven o'clock that I is wonky, but I, I apologize for that. So um, we essentially developed the timeline of the budget um and uh developed the draft budgets. The draft budgets are developed with our um department heads. We start with the expense side first and then develop the income budget. Then review the draft internally to see how it works. And then we go to the budget committee who met twice this year. The first time to talk about our major operating funds, the general fund, the water and sewer fund. And then our second meeting encompassed garbage as well as all of the other funds. Capital improvement funds, uh special revenue funds, agency funds, et cetera. Um, after the review of the draft, we produce a preliminary um budget and that's what we are uh presenting this evening. Uh, again, April thirtieth or before, we must uh approve a budget or you must approve a budget. And so that will be done hopefully at um the April seventh meeting. And then we will implement the budget beginning May one. The goals and objectives were established at the time of creating the budget timeline. And those this year were focused on village services and funding the activities at adequate levels. We uh demonstrate a commitment to our existing infrastructure and proactive repair and replacement of that through continued long-term planning. We've provided for sufficient funding for equipment replacements, building maintenance and information technology. And we are trying our best to balance budget growth commensurate with the growth in the village. So um the highlights include delivery of essential village services, police protection, the maintenance of village streets, uh producing safe water and uh sewer services and providing environmental services, including trash collection and recycling. The budget uh accomplishes so many things, including four or excuse me, thirty four full-time employees, three part-time employees, including the addition of one full-time individual in the street department and an additional crossing guard in the police department. We've been all about technology efficiencies for the last couple of years, so I wanted to highlight a couple of those that are included in the budget this year. Those include uh continuation of the upgraded SCADA system, which was approved at the last um meeting. That has started already and will continue on during the next budget year. Uh, for those of you that's been, have been on the board for a while, one of the initiatives that I put forward now probably several years ago.
Two thousand and fifteen.
Maybe, yeah, would be the implementation of the new ERP system. Um, we really hope to do that this year. No, we're going to.
There's no really hope. It's going to happen.
Exactly. We're going to do that this year.
You spent six hours in here doing a demo. We're going to do it.
Yes.
But the mayor's going to get banned.
Okay.
I'm just saying because that's been something that we've needed to do here for a very, very long time. And I know, I know that you guys have been busy and all that other stuff, but I'm being serious. That's gotta get done, Mr.
Yep. And it's, it's a full system, if you will. Uh, it will not only do our financial management, but personnel management, utility billing, and then also have a component of citizen engagement, which I know is important to you. And then we also have a new safety management program that is being rolled out to provide uh safety manuals and training plans for safety in each of our departments. Um, as far as capital improvement and purchases, this is uh something that I'd like to highlight. Um, some of these things have experienced delays, not only the ERP, but some of even other people's projects, if you will. But this year we will be doing the state and seventy two project. Streetscape will happen this summer. The north and south water main connection will be happening um this summer as well. We will be upgrading some utility system control and communications. We will be installing trans transient voltage surge suppression in some of our uh utility locations, both on the water and wastewater side. And then we have applied for and are waiting to hear whether or not we will receive the safe routes to school grants. So there is a local match required for that and that is uh accounted for in this budget as well.
And that should have been announced by now, but they have not announced it down at Springfield and Mr. Edges and I have tried to overturn every rock that we can overturn.
Just drive down there.
Well, we have. We're, we're going down Tuesday, Wednesday. So hopefully we can knock on some doors and then they can tell us no to our face.
And but the reason that's important here is it's a hundred ninety thousand dollar local match, which is in the budget. So if we don't get those funds, then we won't, won't have to spend that local match.
And we can use that hundred ninety thousand for other things.
Yeah, like an unload.
So, Mr. Cope, if you'll notice up here, we have a review of the uh purchases included. Um, so our capital improvements and purchases also include a drone for the police department, a new pickup truck for both streets and utilities, a wheel loader for the streets and a gator for the utility.
Wait, wait, gator for utilities for the water department?
Uh, for the water and wastewater treatment. Yep.
Why do they need a gator?
They ride around. They ride around all over that wastewater treatment plant. It's, it's, you know, like to get around the facility. They will be utilizing that and then carrying supplies.
Do we have a end loader naming policy at the board level?
We could.
I think so. So we don't have anything against that.
We just need the budget approved so we can, because the equipment, supply and demand, there's not a much, much supply, lots of demand. So they're, they're flying off the parking lot.
It's kind of a little bit.
A good one.
Like, does it need to have a rubber tires on?
Yeah.
Just an end of.
Don't worry about it.
Side by side.
No problem. So those, those are the, the highlights of the budget that we have this evening. I guess I do not go into the deep dive into the budget, but it is here for your review. I'm available to answer any questions that you have. And so there you have it.
So we've had how many budget committee meetings? Two, I think, right?
We did.
Involving this that were both, they were all open to the village board to attend. I want to thank the budget committee and I want to thank Mr. Edges and Ms. Lyons and the whole finance department for their efforts on this budget. But this time I'd like to offer questions for the board.
Was there any consideration of our, of the new information about the water study?
The water study is included in here. So, yes, that is in the engineering sections of both the water and wastewater treatment area. EEI spelled out for us various components of this study that is up to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And I simply broke out the components, whether or not it was water or wastewater related and put it in the budget accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. One of the things that I probably should point out as well is Jay spoke about the ARPA funds that. We will have in excess of that required for the north and south water connection system. Those are included in the general fund budget as revenue. The amount that we expect to be in excess of that in the general.
Any other questions?
I just, I just wanted to know one thing is, is when we worked on this, one thing that we were really hoping for was to bring it into balance. And being new to the board, learning the fact that there were many years of this, the budget wasn't balanced. So that was important to us. So we went through it and kept moving things around to find a way to make sure that it would be a balanced budget. And when we moved to recommend it to bring it forward to this board. It was, we wanted to note that the general fund was made.
Thank you for that work.
Mr. Kelly?
I just had a couple and apologies, I couldn't attend the budget committee meetings. On the intergovernmental revenue on the general fund, are sales tax and state income tax census based numbers?
Sales tax is actually the sales tax that is generated here within the village. Income tax is a, a formula that the state does on a per capita basis.
Okay, because those are pretty large increases year over year for the budget.
Yes, so a couple of things with respect to that. The income tax is now at our seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven residents. Times twelve months, whereas last year we had its, I believe it was eight months and four months with the two splits. So that's the big difference there. Yep.
Okay, and then in the relation to sales tax, under expenses, other expenses on page sixty-nine packet. Sales tax incentive agreements goes from a budget of eighty-five thousand to two hundred and thirteen.
Yes, so you will recall there are two active sales tax incentive agreements in place at the time of the village. Every year Seagulls asks for their, their incentive amounts to be released. Usually it's released in the month of November, so they're very consistent. We also have a sales tax agreement with Metrics Industrial Park. It is, the parties to that are Metrics Realty, Truck Country and Love's. And they, so we've been collecting and stowing away, if you will, the revenue sharing piece of that. They have never asked for their money. So this includes all of the money that is, has been collected today, plus a projected amount to be collected next year that potentially could be, could be released. Theirs, their agreement called for, I believe, quarterly distributions and to be sent to an escrow agent. They've had trouble finding an escrow agent and they have not substantiated all of their expenses to prove that they incurred them. So the money just hasn't been distributed yet, but this accounts for it in case they are distributed on a quarterly basis. And they get all of their money that they're entitled to.
If I could just for a minute, we've started to have some conversations with Metrics just in the last couple of weeks. It loves is the primary sales tax up there, obviously. But it all has to do with the infrastructure that we're agreeing that calls for them to invest four point seven million in the infrastructure in the project. And this agreement doesn't even, didn't even start until twenty twenty, so it's a twenty-year agreement. So they're just now starting to focus on getting the cash out of this, out of, out of our bank, if you will. So we collect it and then we pay it back when they get organized. But first they have to submit the receipts for all those four point seven million. And so we, we started having contacts with Metrics just in the last couple of weeks.
When we do these sales tax incentives, and I was aware of the truck company and I know the story of them. Are we not obligated every year to pay out the percentage that we've agreed to on the sales tax collective?
No, there's a, that, that contract was very clear. I just read it last week and we pay it out for when they ask for it. In this case, they have to set up an escrow account before we can even pay anything because there's three parties that have the funds. There's a real clear contract and it's, it's just, it hasn't been a priority for them, so they just let their money lay here.
The last question I have, and again, I don't want to go through line by line, but I did give the respective joining the meeting.
Advertising.
In the water fund on page eighty-three, there's a proposed rate increase of four point one percent for water revenue and water savings.
Yes.
When I look at the year-over-year budget for total expenses in that same water fund. Our total expenses actually go down by thirty thousand dollars. So how are we justifying a four point one percent rate increase regardless of what other people are increasing their prices for? When our expenses for that revenue are actually going down?
So the revenue generated by the water fund, as you can see, that we are transferring capital improvement funds to fund some of the capital items that are in there. So the water fund does not generate enough money to pay all of their expenses. So I do believe that that is justified and by ordinance, it increases automatically unless you tell me not to increase it. So that's what the four point one percent amount is.
We have two ten-dollar charges to accommodate capital improvements specifically for those type of motion or those type of build outs?
Yes.
They're not adequate either. In fact, when we finish this study, we're very likely going to be back here talking about probably doubling those, doubling those charges. Henry Grove's base speed is seventy-eight dollars and ours is thirty-eight. So, and that's before you even get to per gallon. So there's our, in order to pay for all this infrastructure that we have, we're going to see water rates increasing over the next few years. There's no other way.
I, I don't know. I mean, we've had this conversation for the last eight years about how the water department doesn't pay its own bills. For lack of better terminology, the water fund doesn't pay its own bills. And, and, and we, so the whole reason that we had the first water presentation, I think, Trusty Cope, you were on the board, I think.
Yep.
When we had to have the special meeting because we voted down the budget, right, at one of these hearings, right? Not one of these hearings, but the first presentation of the first vote for the budget meeting, we voted it down because that's when it was going from ten dollars to twenty dollars. And we voted it down.
We voted it down because they couldn't tell us what the ten dollars was gonna be used for.
So then. So then there was a presentation done by EEI explaining the condition of our water system, some of the things that had gone on. And at the time, I was, I think it was right, your, when you, when your first time on the board was at twenty fifteen, I think? Like when, when your first year here, I believe? And at that time, we tried to make a conscious effort to make improvements in our water department. As far as like our revenue stream and that kind of stuff to kind of make it more self-sufficient. And still now, almost, you know, from twenty fifteen to now, the water, the water department is still in the same position. Nobody likes higher water. Nobody likes spending more money at the village. I mean, I, I completely understand it. But everybody, if you look at just what we've seen here, where there's a higher percentage of sixty to, what, forty to sixty-year-old water main, that we have no plan. On how to replace it. Zero. We have a top up and that they just talked about up until that it's two thousand and twelve, they put, or they put it in the ground. And now there's a change, in two thousand and seven, they put it in the ground and maybe there's a chance that we might have to turn it on or abandon it. So all that money's up, we know. We have a train that we need to turn on. It's gonna cost us over a million dollars. I understand. There's nobody that understands more than me how nobody wants to spend more money on water. I, I, I sit at this dais with the rest of you because we all paid bills. We all get the same questions. And so we try to do what we do, which is ask our elected officials for help and try to raise revenue streams one way or another. But if someone can come up with a better plan or a better idea, I'm all ears. I'm not saying that I'm in support of raising water rates. It's for the sake of raising rates. But if we don't do something at some point to change the direction of this village. As far as our operations go, we're not going to be moving forward. And that's where we are. We're all here because we were all upset about how things were running and we're not moving forward and we're staying in the same place. We're not providing this service or that service or other towns are doing this. These are the difficult conversations as to why.
And I understand that.
I think I just got bought to as a kid.
I, I don't, I don't mean it to come across like that.
Well, it is.
I, I understand that. However, when I look at this budget. We make more than enough in the water fund and the super fund to pay the expenses represented in the water fund and the sewer fund. When I look at the water sewer improvement fund, improving the system, which we get twenty dollars for. We're estimating revenue of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Let's call it three hundred and fifty-eight because it's three fifty-seven, six ninety-four. This year, we're projected to get three fifty-four, seven thirty-one, of which we've spent zero because projects have been delayed. We have a fund, projected fund balance of seven hundred and forty-five thousand in that. So when we're talking about long-term planning and we take in. Thirty-three percent or, you know, a third of a million dollars, three hundred and sixty thousand a year, just in a fund dedicated for improvements. I again have a problem stating that we need to raise rates because we have improvements that are coming that we can't afford to pay for.
So Trusty Cope, the first thing I would suggest that you do is, is take a look at our capital, at our capital improvement plan, which has over fifteen million dollars of unfunded projects.
For water and sewer.
Sorry, twenty-five million dollars total, fifteen million dollars just for water and sewer. And we spent, you know, almost two years putting that plan together and it is just a plan. That's why you don't vote on it. It's just a plan that says how we plan to use our funds forward. But yes, those capital funds that you're talking about will fund all those things and not nearly enough. And that's, that's where you're, that's, that's why we're presenting this study. Because I don't, I don't want to sit here and try and debate all of you with my lack of knowledge and technicalities and frankly, also on the financing of all these improvements. That's why this is so important to. While we're on the topic of budget, there's one last thing I have to say because we can't have a meeting about the budget without it. The general fund this year is balanced, all operating funds are balanced this year, but really only because of ARPA. If we hadn't received eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in ARPA, we'd be sitting here talking about really deep cuts, painful cuts. Or another borrowing from capital funds again, like we did last, the last two years or using, last year we used motor fuel tax, which is also a capital fund. So we, we are still really, this year we were about three hundred thousand dollars short in the general fund. We're still, we still really need to find a. Three to five hundred thousand dollar revenue source for the general, to keep the general fund going as well. There are three things out there that won't go into details now. They're all require legislation that would not require a referendum here. It's a quarter percent motor fuel tax and one percent sales tax and what's the third one? We forget the third. Anyway, there are three ways that we could raise taxes here without a referendum, but they all require legis, I'm sorry. The third way is the increase of the local government distributed fund from six percent to eighty percent, which probably generate close to three hundred thousand dollars for us. That's something that could actually pass in this, in this session, although it was not in the government's budget. So we have, we have two big challenges really in our budget. One is the general fund and the other is the capital fund. With that, we, we will have plenty of time for discussion at the next meeting.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments about the budget?
Do, does the advertising committee, is there budget request in here?
Yes.
What, what was represented from the ask in this budget? Because I know we've talked in the PR committee meeting, there was staff, they're talking about somebody to run it or could we supplement with a five? There was talk about the funds for the events. How much was?
There was a thousand dollars put in for the events committee. There was twelve thousand dollars put in for the.
Contract.
Yeah, a contract individual to.
Social.
Yeah, communications specialist, I think I called it. And then there was the printing of the newsletters.
Could you direct us to where those would be located?
So there, it's not a line item. There is additional professional fees, including, so other professional fees is where the twelve thousand dollars is. The printing of the newsletters is printing forms and invoices, I believe. And then the thousand dollars, the events committee thing is in the. It's all general fund.
Last year, the newsletters were not included to do as many as we did, so that was something that we spent. This year, there was not budgeted for, but communication with the residents is something that we also.
We appreciate that. Thank you for giving that in the question.
Any other questions about the budget that's presented? Now, we're gonna have a, a budget hearing on April seventh.
Right, and so, Mr. Mayor, with that, we would ask for a motion to schedule a public hearing for the 2023 annual budget on April seventh, twenty twenty-two. Anybody would like to make a motion to that effect?
Someone.
Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the board, please?
Ms. Colder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Cope?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Pauline?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
We should pass it to you.
Thank you. I think with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll just ask if there are any questions about the monthly reports. We've taken a lot of your time tonight. We appreciate your indulgence for topics.
Any questions? So we have the police, police report and then we have the engineering report. Mr. Paulson is on the phone or in the team meeting, if you will. If you have any questions about the engineering report. And then, of course, Ms. Lyons loves to answer our questions about financial reporting.
I think the finance report is getting routine enough now that we can just pick questions and then have to get through this.
If I can make one for EEI, I just wanted to ask on page one oh six, when we go through the list of all the projects. Do we have any idea for a start date yet for Streetscape? Because looking at Coon Creek and that festival, we're trying to figure out if we need to move the parade rounds.
Tim, I'll speak to that if you don't mind. I'm sorry, it's a different.
It's okay. Sorry.
handling that project. We, we have a meeting planned for April ninth. Where we're gonna have a pre-construction meeting and then we're gonna invite every business downtown and anybody else who wants to come. To come here and, and talk about the schedule and then take a walk outside and see what's going on. And we've developed a list now with Linda Self and Josh's help. I think I have a list, a phone number and an email address for every principal downtown. And so that be, that would, that will be the pre-con meeting and the construction should be right around May first.
Is the Streetscape have a condition like a lot of the I dot jobs? They have a completion date and there's fines if they don't reach that completion date?
Yes, there is a sixteen week, sixteen weeks is the timeframe. And I apologize, I don't know what the penalties are.
That's fine.
I'd like to say thank you then for reaching out to the business community on that, so that they're a part of it from the very beginning because.
We learned our lesson last year.
Yeah.
If we reached out, we just didn't reach out quite far enough.
If we could, I mean, obviously I know you're working with the chamber on that too, so just as one little perk or comment is if we could give them at least a week's notice.
Oh, yeah.
Of the meeting, that's.
I plan to get it out probably this week.
Perfect, okay. I just, it's kind of nice to know one day or two in a month.
It's kind of weird to ask, is that something that we can record or post or something?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna first of all, we posted it everywhere last year. We in A5.
I remember that.
Dollars to do PR and everything else, but what we put it and I walked the street and knocked on every door. Everybody didn't answer all those doors. And the doors that aren't usually open are the ones that didn't open. And I think you and I visited a couple of those after the event. Actually, to be fair, one of the big, one of the bigger complaints was about a funeral home. And that was a five minute conversation with them and accommodation we took care of really quickly. So there was there were really only three businesses that were even mentioned last year. And it was not even them that mentioned it was mostly other people on their behalf. So we're definitely going to reach out, do a better job this time. So with that, that was a question I'll make sure I can remember what that was about.
I do have one question. Yeah, I do have one question on the financial one. In the page, sorry, I should tell you page, page one, it says one of seven, but it's page 111 of the packet. Under total village, the year to date budget has a budgeted deficit of 937,000. And our year to date actual is a positive of 1.3 million, which is great, right? If I'm reading this correctly, we we have underspent 1.3 million of what we actually, we've underspent 2.2 million of what we figured we would be at at this point. Is there any major expenditures coming in between now and the end of the year that would eat away that 2.2 million dollar surplus that we're currently at?
So right now, if you were to look at Fund 34, there is parked there half of the ARPA funds in revenue. That is not earned revenue for this fiscal year. A portion of that will be earned and a portion will be moved to unearned revenue that will be saved for the expenditures for, you know, other other projects, if you will. So there are some things that definitely will eat into that dollar amount for sure.
In your professional estimation, are we going to end at a positive for the fiscal year?
Yes, we will.
And we were budgeting probably a loss, am I correct?
With with.
1.1 million.
Yes. We didn't do Streetscape, we didn't do the intersection, we didn't do the water. Absolutely, yes.
So we we will have that positive. And looking at next year's budget, we're still having fun to grow. So our underlying accounts will even grow more to accommodate some of these projects.
So a lot of those funds that are expenditures that were deferred will be realized during the next fiscal year. So I think when I roll this up into a format like this, you're going to see use of capital funds and and negative again this coming year. Does that explain what you're Eric?
Yeah, very soon, trustee Kelly, Lori now has enough information from this budget and our spending through 10 months that she'll be able to do a cash flow. She'll be able to do fund balances and then a cash flow analysis. And then we can give you the months on hand, how many months on hand after you.
Awesome.
So if you look, I should have mentioned this too. Many of the funds do have the fund balance listed on a running total in the budget section. The one area that does not is the water and sewer fund. And I did that intentionally because it's that is an enterprise fund. It has depreciation that we don't budget for it. It has millions and millions of dollars of water and sewer assets that, you know, like really don't provide you with an accurate picture like these other funds do as far as what the true fund balance is. So I intentionally left those off, okay?
Last year, I think we got the cash flow to you in May, but it may be April this year.
Any other question about the presented reports?
If there's nothing, we would ask for a motion to approve the March 17, 2022 accounts payable to personnel.
So can I I will entertain a motion.
Go vote.
Questions or comments? No, okay. Ms. Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Holder, hi. Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Pauline, hi. Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Thank you. We're gonna the next I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable. Or do we have any questions about it?
You have the number in front of you. If you could read the number in the letter, I'm sure.
Just one really silly question, but on page 128, the Nycor bill was a dollar 55.
So that it I I would let me done that. Yeah. Let me just stuck it up so much for me, that's what.
What page number was that?
128.
Page 9.
Okay, so that's at one of our wastewater treatment facilities. It's probably one of the huts that's heated, you know, like we have control huts.
Okay.
Like, for instance, if you were to drive on Higgins Road, there's a teeny tiny building and then a large building. So that teeny tiny building is actually the, I call it the control hut for the lift station. So that's heated to make sure that the things function in there, but it doesn't reflect a lot of heat. So it's something like that, that's what, yeah.
That's never been on the budget in here, never been listened.
What's that?
This stuff like this for $1.55. Never since I've been here.
Maybe it's been in the Nycor.
Maybe it was just added on.
Well, because usually there's the account with the different lines and usually it's maybe just sticks out this time because it's so tiny.
I'll check and make sure what facility.
You and Jay are both authorized to sign on that $1.55 check.
It'll require two signatures.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable. Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Pauline. Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Holder.
Hi.
We should pass it to you.
Now on the bill board committee reports, Mr. Kelly, Business Development Commissioner.
The BDC met. What was the last one, I'd say. And continued to work on the economic development plan, moved into the next steps thanks to the guidance of Mr. Ray, who was leading the group through that and Chairman Kerjacki doing great work. The the idea is to focus on what we believe are the main themes that we want to focus on. And then what are those motions under the themes that we've got? We've got some homework over the next month to fill out and come back to the next meeting. So really great discussions around there. We went over some updates on verification. It was talked about and shared that in the budget. There was a proposal to include 100,000 instead of the 75,000. And 100,000 is what it used to be so that if anyone thinks we're just arbitrarily up upping it 25,000, it started at 100,000. It was reduced to 75,000 and now it's bringing it back to its original levels. And there's already interest from businesses for those funds, in fact, for large chunks of those funds. So we'll see how those come in once we know budget approvals. The and then Mr. Ray also gave updates for many of the developments that are happening. And once that we're able to be provided as updates. Any questions?
Comments?
Sorry. And just again, thank you, Mr. Ray, for leading us through that and for Chairman Kerjacki, who's really working with Mr. Ray to bring us all together at the BDC. It's been a pleasure to be a part of that with that team, so. With that, back to you, Mr. President.
Okay, public relations.
Public relations, we'll have our next meeting this next Thursday, one week from today at 6:30.
Date?
The 24th. 6:30. Is that one? You won't be here.
I won't either.
Yes.
I'm gonna be in spring.
Sorry, because I planned. I need to work through things. Yeah, we'll be here.
Yes, okay. So we will have 20.
Yep.
6:30 in the beginning. Mr. Cole, top of course.
Just prepping for spring, just so everybody knows, one of the salt domes collapsed. Replacements about 15,000. I don't know. He was gonna see if they could re weld the one that's broke. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. So. That's all.
Talks a lot about money tonight, Ms. Pauline. Do you have anything for the budget committee?
I just want to thank everybody for their participation and for those that kind of came in and video came in. And Lori and Jay for all that you did and appreciated being my first year. You kept me involved with it and kept me on the the emails so I could kind of see what's going on. And that was very much appreciated. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you. You're up.
Thank you. New business tonight. They're going to announcements. I have one. I mean, we all got an email about it. Pretty upset about it. Rose Garden is closing. Their last day of business here in the Village of Hampshire will be the 27th. They own the establishment for almost 20 years or so. And the their whole family has been a huge part of this community, has given so much. It's really unfortunate they're closing, but I know that.
Sam's tired.
I know Sam is looking forward to retirement, so there's a positive.
The BDC should do some kind of a article on them because he had a restaurant in Elgin for decades, him and his brother.
We did a spotlight on them some years ago, but you're right, we should do it again. They were like one of our first business changes.
Well, not only that, but I mean, some of the stuff they've 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 done for the community. They've offered their place at Christmas time.
You know, something for the PR. Story on that business and the family's contribution to the community.
Pretty kind of cool maybe to get a paragraph, interview from Sam.
Yeah. And I agree with what you're saying on that. This is more than just the business leader community. This is a family that has given so much, dedicated so much to the community. It's wish them all the best, but it's definitely a lot.
Huge hit to us. Anything we've ever needed? Anne and her family and Tony and Sam, what do you need? What can we give you? I mean, it's 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 tremendous loss. So I mean, Ms. Ms. Clerk, you said that you've got things in the works. I don't know if you want to talk about it or.
Yeah, I can talk about it. We're going to do a parade, we're trying to get a parade and get everybody involved. Sunday, March 27 at noon, line up at the school. And then we'll just pass Rose Garden and everybody can disperse after that. And Thursday, the 24th, the events committee and anybody who wants to join us at 10 o'clock at the Rose Garden. We're trying to get some balloons there, decorate outside, have a card for everybody to sign. And especially you can do photo ops with other customers for those couple of days. So we're trying to do, you know, something and then they were here for a long time. So we got we're working on that really fast. So, yeah, go participate, it's open.
It's a it's a big lot. They're really good family to this community.
I just kind of announced, if you want some more sad news, we just got a multiplier today.
What?
The multiplier, we just got it today, tentative on 1.0601. Everything is going up by 6%. Because long against.
About 4%.
All right, does anyone?
It's a three year average on what the buildings places are selling. That's where you come up with the multiplier. The houses are going for just more unbelievable. He can't believe it. So, yeah.
So to end us on a high note, unless anything, anybody has anything else?
I got some good news.
I I wanted to congratulate Dr. Dana Robinson on her recent accomplishment of becoming a doctor.
An education.
A doctor in education. So that's what you were gonna announce.
That was, I appreciate that. It was nine long years of hard work and raising two babies and she did it finally. She.
An official doctor as of Tuesday. So when when somebody else is their doctor in the house, does she raise her?
Well, I don't anymore. Yes. She does, so I'm very proud of her and thank you for that.
All right, anybody else have any positive uplifting or negative news? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Ms. Holder. Hi. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Pauline, hi.
Mr. Robinson. Hi.